Okay, cool. Um, in that case, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at six thirty. Um, and we'll begin with roll call.
All right, Director Ahuja.
Yeah.
Director Bajaj.
Here.
Director Chow. Uh, absent, Director Racy.
Here.
And Director Waslawski.
Here. Did you say, um, uh, our other directors here? I only see eight.
Uh, no, I just called his name, but he is absent. Kevin Chow is absent.
I'm, I'm here.
Oh, now, cool. Uh, our Director Bajaj, did I miss you?
Uh, no, I think you called me. I think my connection just broke up.
Okay.
No, you said our alphabetically first person was here. I can't think of her name.
Uh, in, okay, without.
It's, yeah, new for Ahuja. She, she changed her last name, Director Ahuja.
Right, she changed her last name. I just don't see her on my screen. Alright.
Okay, in that case, we'll go ahead and move on to public comment. Um, so if anyone would like to share anything, now is your time. Okay, hearing no comments. Um, we'll go ahead and move on to our consent items. Um, we have five items, but if anyone would like to make a motion to pass all of them, we can go ahead and do that.
I can make a motion, isn't it, poor?
I'll second that.
We'll go ahead and move to a vote to pass the consent items.
All right, Director Ahuja.
Yes.
Director Bajaj.
Yes.
Director Racy.
Yes.
And Director Waslawski.
Yes.
Great, we have passed our consent items. We'll move on to discussion and action items, starting with, um, item four A, um, the professional services agreement.
Uh, excellent. Um, so we have John Castro here from County Council. Uh, John, did you want me to put the agreement up on screen? Would that be helpful?
I'm not sure. It's a pretty lengthy agreement, um, but, but I can say that it's a, a design services agreement that is typically used by the county. It's in standard county form. Um, minor adjustments for the district.
Great, thank you. Um, so.
Quick question. So, uh, the background to this, if I understand, is that, uh, you looked at the existing agreements that the county has signed, including, uh, with, um, this, um, contractor. And, uh, uh, this looked like the closest fit for the kind of contractor we need to oversee, um, uh, changes to our, our pool deck and, and our, uh, other parts of our facility. You interviewed more than, uh, than one?
Yes, yes.
Uh, yes, we, so we reached out to the top five. Um, as, as the staff report said, um, last year, when the county underwent this solicitation, uh, the county received approximately thirty applicants, all of which were scored and vetted. Um, we reached out to the top five, um, to see, one, if they would be interested in district work, and then, two, um, if so, uh, we move forward with setting up a meeting with Kevin, um, to see about their experience with aquatic facilities.
Okay, so in, in, in your judgment, Kevin, and, and, um, and whoever else was there, this was the, uh, contractor who is, who is best qualified to oversee these renovations.
Um, actually, this one is for the site master plan. Um, so it wouldn't actually be for the renovations yet, uh, but we would be getting to that at some point. So the, um, that process is split into two portions. One portion would be the, um, site master plan, where they would bring together, uh, a group of individuals to kind of see what our programs are, what our facilities are, what the needs are, and then kind of scope out some, uh, some drawings on, on what could be in the future. Um, the second part of that would be to, uh, contract out with a separate agency, which would actually then, uh, design based on the, um, based on the drawings. Uh, is that about right, uh, John?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, they're, they're split up into two, two buckets. Uh, this, this one before the, uh, board today is with Dewberry Architects, who would do the, uh, master planning task, which includes a site visit, uh, facilities assessment, um, uh, probable, uh, end of life for, for equipment and things like that. And then work with the district to kind of develop their vision for a capital improvement plan to implement going forward. Um, and, and in a future meeting, you'll see an, um, another agreement with another top five candidate for another design, um, services agreement, who would not be given work until next year. And their task would be to take that plan and develop and design, be the designer of record and, and draft construction documents for permitting to implement that master plan. Um, it, it, at first blush, it, I guess it begs the question, why would you split up, um, into two agreements? And the reason is to avoid a potential conflict of interest. Um, under the Political Reform Act and California Attorney General opinions, they have found in other instances, um, it's heavily factually dependent, um, that, um, a designer or a design professional who provides, um, advice, um, learns the inner workings of a public entity, um, and does more than beyond providing technical expertise could be found to be a public official. Um, and therefore, if they were the later designer of record to develop those construction documents, um, the Attorney General has previously found that would be, they would have an interest in making that contract. So to just avoid that kerfuffle, um, it's much easier just to split it into two agreements with two separate designers.
Alright, so, uh, these guys would just be doing the site master plan.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I believe, and Kevin, you can correct me, um, maybe some immediate stopgap projects.
Correct. Um, so they would also be assisting with some of the stopgap projects, which we would use the grant money, uh, on. So that full deck, uh, chemical room, things like that.
Okay.
Under the, the, the service agreement, we could also use them for the few projects.
Okay, yeah, cuz I was wondering, you know, I didn't realize it was just for the, uh, site master plan. I did read all ninety-seven pages of the agreement, trying to figure out what are these guys doing? And.
Right. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
But it wasn't, you know, but now that's clear. Yeah, okay, so, so at the same time, they'll be working on a site master plan. They may also, uh, help oversee, uh, the minor projects of, of the pool deck and, uh, uh, in order to get it done during the low season, uh, in the winter.
Uh, that's the intention. I'm told that the timeline is a bit tight, so, uh,
It is.
We'll, we'll see.
Yeah, cuz given the timelines they, they put in, there's ninety-seven pages for, uh, each stage they go through. I go, this process could take months. You know, and so, and I know every day we, uh, that we don't have somebody turned on to get, to get the actual work done is another day behind, so. Um, you know, and so I've come to the conclusion that approving this is probably in our best interest as soon as possible. You know, any, any delay, um, will, uh, have significant influence, uh, in whether or not we can actually make the twenty twenty-four deadline of, uh, using the money that, that, uh, hundred seventy-seven thousand that it's been allocated. It's gonna be tight as it is. Thank you.
Uh, was there any specific questions that the directors had regarding the, uh, public service agreement?
It looks like it's been vetted by, uh, the lawyers and, and to the best of your ability, uh, the, um, contractor chosen is, is the best, best person for our needs, best, best group, company, contractor, whatever you wanna call it.
Uh, yes, I believe so. I was impressed with Dewberry. So I think that they are the ones we want for this project, for sure. Um, John, you have your hand up. Is that, uh?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the, the professional services agreement won't, would not discuss, um, the master planning or, or the scope specifically. The way that, um, these agreements are structured in the county format is that they're essentially like a master agreement or an umbrella agreement. So that's why you would know, notice that, um, the exhibits to that agreement include a, a sample template project agreement. And once the designer's under contract, then we'll enter into negotiations with them to, to get a proposal and, and actually finalize a project agreement. And that, that is when you will see the direct scope of work, the prices, um, timeline, and that sort of thing.
I'll move to approve the agreement, so we can keep moving.
Um, I'll second that. Um, so we have a motion on the floor before we move to a vote. Um, I just wanted to open the floor for any public comment, if there is any. If not, we'll go ahead and move straight into the vote. Okay, hearing no comments, we'll go ahead and vote on this measure.
All right, uh, in alphabetical order, Director Ahuja. Uh, Director Bajaj. Uh, I think you're on mute. Director Bajaj.
Uh, yeah, sorry.
Uh, Director Racy.
Uh, in favor.
And Director Waslawski.
Uh, agree.
Okay, great. Uh, this motion passes. We'll go ahead and move on to item four B. Uh, the one hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars, um, for renovating facilities.
Uh, right, so the, um, essentially, the State of California grant, um, as a requirement to actually get the funds, we need to enter into a deed restriction. Um, a deed restriction is pretty serious, uh, and so, um, we thought that it would be important that the board understand this before, uh, entering into that, uh, into that deed restriction. So, um, John, do you have anything to add about a deed restriction? What kind of things that might prevent?
Um, not much, other than to say that it would restrict the use of the property for, I believe, the term was thirty years.
Correct.
And, and that, that's, it means what it says, um, regarding, um, it's essentially, I wouldn't say a cloud over the title, but definitely a limitation on the use of the property. And, and that could affect things in terms of, um, i- if a portion needed to be sold, um, if the district wanted to engage another business and what have you. And, um, all to say is that thirty years is a long time, um, especially for a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. But that being said, I don't know the, I don't know the workings of, of the district as well as Kevin, so I'll defer.
Right, so, uh, and, and, and he's absolutely right. That, that is a very, um, it, it is very strict. Um, however, uh, you know, the district only has one property, so, you know, selling it off seems a little unlikely. Uh, and it's also very unlikely that our, our mission would change from recreation, so, um, it, you know, so I think despite the fact that this is a very heavy, uh, restriction, I think that it's still okay to go through with it. Um, that it, the deed restriction would expire in twenty forty-eight, so it is quite a long time. Uh, is there any specific questions I can answer regarding the, the grant, uh, the deed restriction, or, um, any of the projects the money would be used towards?
So, uh, quick question, Kevin. So, when you say deed restriction, is it restricting only things like you mentioned, like the sale or changing the mission or something like that? What about like any minor impacts that it might have? Are there any there, do that?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. Uh, I think those would be the most, uh, onerous ones. Uh, John, is there anything I'm, I'm missing as far as what we couldn't do that, that we might need to do?
Uh, it's, it's pretty factually dependent. It's hard to, to imagine the various scenarios. Um, one possibility would be if the district needed to sell property, um, to pay bills or something like that. It could affect the value of the property, given the limitation on its use, but it, it's hard to think in a, in a vacuum.
Right, right. Uh, like I said, we have one property, so that we're not selling any piece of it. Like, there's just.
Yeah, so, uh, what I mean was, there's no, uh, impact on day-to-day running of the property, right? It's just in these massive eventualities, if we need to sell or something major like that.
Absolutely, yes.
Restrictions, okay, got it.
Yes. So unlikely, but very impactful if that scenario was to come up.
The only other scenario that came up in my mind was the possibility, I, I guess this guarantees it. Let's say the city of Cupertino in that timeframe decides to take over the, uh, district, um, and exit, you know? Uh, they'd have to keep the property as a park.
Uh, John, actually, just a, a quick question on that one. Um, because, uh, if the city of Cupertino was at, at some point contemplating, um, uh, consolidating the district, uh, but that would actually count as a change of ownership. So, uh, a deed restriction would actually prevent that potentially?
No, the way the deed restriction is drafted is that it runs with the land.
Okay, okay. Alright, yeah, so they would have to run a park. That might, that might actually not be a negative for the residents.
Yeah, it's a, it's a sideways negative, but yeah, I mean, it's, but it's what occurred to me. And, and I go, okay, well, that's not so bad. You know, I mean, at least for the next, you know, till twenty forty-eight. So they couldn't turn it back into the, you know, couldn't turn it into a school or something like that. Not that it's big enough for that. So, anyway.
Um, can I say, I just put my hand up. I'm trying to be polite. This is Jenny. I don't know if you want public comment at this point. I just wanted to. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've been polite. I've used Zoom enough now. I know to put my hand up. Uh, but yes, no, thank you. Um, a very interesting conversation, and yes, I, that's good if, if this would mean that the, the facility would remain as a parkland. Okay, if Cupertino does come into the property at some point, which we're not, you know, future down the road, okay. It is interesting. I am familiar with things that do run with the land. Uh, a lot of times they're put in, uh, for various reasons on pieces of property, et cetera. And it is interesting, because if, I think it is a good measure, that at least the property would have to remain as some type of a parkland that would be useful to the people in Rancho Rinconada as, uh, green space, open space, or as a facility, et cetera. But I do think that that's something to think about and, and trying to make sure that the land is kept as a park um, in the long run, rather than being sold for, um, sold to another city, sold as, um, something else, a dump. I, I'm sorry, that's a terrible thing, but, um, I think that the main goal is that this, this facility and the land be kept as future recreational use for the, the neighborhood in the area. I, I think that that's a good goal, and having something that would force it to remain as a parkland down the road, I, I'm very happy with it, if that's what the upshot of this is. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jenny.
So it looks like, uh, the other part of approving this is approving, you know, um, taking on the grant for a hundred seventy-seven thousand and change. And I do notice that we may end up spending a hundred and fifty thousand of that on, on, uh, as much as that on, on our site plan, and, and we'll see what kind of, uh, costs come out. Hopefully, it's not, hopefully, it's not that large, you know? By, by far, uh, for them overseeing, uh, site planning and, and, uh, our short-term goals, so. But we'll see when that happens. Excuse me.
I think I agree with a lot of the sentiments. I, I think it's a net positive. Um, so, I'll, I'll open the floor to any other comments, but they're on, I would go ahead and.
Do you have a question, uh, if I may ask, Misha?
Yeah, yeah, of course, go ahead.
So, uh, with the grant, uh, risk, uh, I know, I understand there's a restriction, would, uh, would it restrict like, uh, uh, you know, like adding, uh, improving facility, like if you want to add a, let's say, a tennis court or something like that, or, or, uh, or a bocce ball court or something like that?
Uh, I can't imagine it would affect that.
We're more limited by lack of room for a tennis court, for instance. Uh, there's no place to put anything that they, a bocce ball. Uh, I can see one place where it might fit and, and still be a functioning park. So, uh, but no, it, it, the way I read it, and I'm not a lawyer here, but the way I read it is, doesn't preclude using it for other forms of recreation that we're not using it for now, you know? Any recreational do, any, any recreation, uh, legal recreation, I think it'll do, you know, is the way I read it, so. But, uh, most of them were excluded from, because we're just a two-acre park, you know? You know, we don't have room to play football or anything like that, cuz that eats up more than two acres, you know? So I wouldn't see that the functionist park will change much over the next, uh, thirty years, you know? I hope that answers your question.
Oh, yeah, it, it does, uh, because I actually, uh, know a couple other cities, uh, with smaller recreation centers, just like this. They have, uh, a small bocce ball, uh, court with a little sand pit, uh, or, uh, nearby the facilities. But, uh, but thanks for, uh, clarifying the question, Steve.
You're welcome.
Uh, this is just me nitpicking a little bit, but I'm curious as to why, uh, the deed is referred to as like a thirty-year deed, but then it's only to, through, uh, twenty forty-eight?
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, the grants actually started in, in twenty eighteen, so it was, it's basically thirty years from the very start, when the grant started going out.
I see, okay.
Actually, I think it's for the passage of Proposition sixty-five, which was two before that. That's how they got to the thirty years, so.
Okay, there's no other comments. Um, and we've already had our public comment, which is great. Uh, then I'll go ahead and move to approve this.
I'll second your, uh, motion to approve it.
Great, we have a motion on the floor. We will go ahead and move into, um, a vote.
All right, we're gonna go in reverse alphabetical. Uh, Director Waslawski.
Uh, approve.
Director Racy.
In favor.
Uh, Director Bajaj.
In favor.
And Director Ahuja.
Proved.
Great.
Awesome, this motion passes. Um, we'll go ahead and move on to item four C, um, which is the methods of financial approvals.
Uh, great. Uh, at first, I just wanted to say, uh, thanks, uh, thank you for joining the meeting, John, uh, and, uh, we will, you're welcome to stick around, but we'll, uh, we'll connect, uh, another day.
Thank you, uh, thank you very much, Board. Um, and I will bow out and, um, enjoy your evening.
Bye.
Okay, great. Um, so as far as item C, um, so to sum the situation, uh, Director Waslawski does, uh, the great majority of sign, uh, for checks and other financial documents, um, weekly, sometimes even twice a week. Uh, and, you know, it is a fairly burdensome role. Uh, and as many of you may be aware, this is Director Waslawski's final term uh, after a long and illustrious career as a board member. Um, it's, uh, over two decades now, I believe, so that's, that's quite three decades, that's quite an accomplishment. Wow.
It'll be thirty. Yes.
Longer than most of our staff has been alive, so, um. And, uh, so Director Waslawski has indicated last month that, um, he wants to make sure that, uh, there's sufficient signers for, uh, after December of this year. Uh, there's a few possible solutions that staffs come up with, but no, um, direct proposals yet. The first one, of course, is using some kind of a bill pay program. Uh, and this would be an electronic authorization. I checked with Wells Fargo. I had a meeting yesterday about this, and, um, interestingly enough, our Wells Fargo account, even though it's a government account, was open on the consumer side. So it turns out that bill pay will be free for us. Um, the catch is that, uh, the authorization, the authorizing person and the initiating person can, is the same. Meaning, when we have a physical check, uh, the way that it works is bill comes in, I take a look at the bill, I initial that bill. Sunny gets that bill, and then she makes a check. And neither I nor Sunny can sign that check. Steve can sign the check. Now, I can sign checks now, uh, because of, um, the policy that lets me sign checks, but it's only refund checks and checks going to very obvious vendors, things like PG&E Comcast, things that no one would ever, you couldn't possibly do anything weird with those vendors, uh, things that are recurring. Um, so that's kind of how the checks and balances work right now. Now, if we go to a bill pay program, the thing is, is that whoever the directors are could both create, initiate a payment, and also authorize it. So, uh, there is the potential for um, things to happen. That also means that whoever's initiating payments, so for example, Sunny would have the same authority. So that's a potential problem. The other potential, uh, the other possibility, of course, is to create different policies that would let, um, well, I guess the initiation and the authorization is already happening right now. So for example, because I can already sign checks that go to, um, refunds for, uh, programs, um, it's possible to expand that policy to provide more authority to do that. But, uh, there is kind of a limit to how far you'd wanna do that, or maybe open it up, but then have some kind of additional oversight. Um, there's ways of doing it, but it would want, I would wanna make sure that it's done really delicately. I'd really wanna talk to our auditors about how to do that, you know? While maintaining as much separation of duties as possible, or at least have as much immediate oversight as possible. Uh, and then the final, um, this one's kind of a minor thing, is moving a credit card from Chase, what's that currently, to Wells Fargo. That's one of the bills that we have a big problem with. Because the bills come in and we have exactly thirty days to pay. Um, but then the mail has been really, uh, slow recently. And so the, the bill comes late, and then we have to go through our authorization, where we're matching up all of the payments with a receipt. That takes a little bit of time. Then we have to get the check made, and then the check has to get signed, and then it has to go back into the mail. And by that point, thirty days can have passed, and this actually happened over the summer. Uh, and after thirty days, Chase immediately cuts off the credit card, and so we have automatic payments going on, on the card for things like Zoom that wouldn't get paid. So by moving the credit card over to Wells Fargo, which is where we have our main, uh, checking account at, uh, the final process could be faster by simply doing a transfer to the, um, to the credit card, from the checking account. Um, we'd have to figure out a, a good way to, you know, make note of who authorized it, uh, but, um, but I think that's, that's another minor possibility. The first two, I think, are the more impactful ones, that would really make sure that, uh, those signatures can get done quickly and with minimal impact to directors. Uh, so with that, uh, I just wanted to put those out as a, as a starter for the conversation. Um, but, uh, this is really, uh, more for the, the board to discuss.
Kevin, have you looked at two, uh, two-factor authentication for the automated payments? Were you able to check on that?
Um, so for, um, for the automatic payments, unfortunately, it's on the Wells Fargo side, and they were saying that, uh, there's nothing that can be done as far as, um, making it. So there's, uh, off, the, the separate, uh, initiator and an authorizer. Uh, maybe it's because it's on the.
Uh, to, uh, so, you know, uh, yeah, that I know, V, because I do use Wells Fargo sometimes, too. You have to, one person can log in and just go ahead and pay the bills. But to be able to add a bill or a biller to the bill pay system, you can do two, two-factor authentication. So basically, you would, uh, either have to approve it by email, or you would have to approve it by a message, like you get a code on a cell phone.
Yes, yes.
Right? So, that might be one way to do it, that instead of doing it as a text message on a cell phone, have it being sent to, uh, somebody else on an email, and they approve that the biller. somebody else on an email, and they approve that the builder be added on. So that at least is one level of control where who is being added on as a biller. You will not be able to control how much is paid, but at least the person being paid is approved by two people.
Can I uh can I ask a little bit about that?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so let's say that we have others make up of Comcast, right?
Yeah.
Um so we'd go into bill pay.
Yeah.
We'd say we whoever is authorizing, so Sunny is gonna authorize.
So even before the authorization part, so when you're trying to add Comcast as a biller, right, somebody who builds you, over there itself, you can have a two th- two factor authentication where uh you can either receive a text message or an email to validate that this is a valid biller.
Oh. So that no pipe payments could go out with at least without a notification, at least.
Yeah, so basically, even to add them as somebody you are authorized to pay bills to that once they've been added on, like Comcast has been added on this, because you already have the ability to do refund checks and which is the largest, you know, chunk of it, we might not want to add each and every person who we are sending in a refund check to as a biller, because that would just not make any sense, because it's minute amounts. But for regular bills, right, like Comcast and PG&E and all of these regular vendors that you have, we approve those with two people authenticating it. And once they've been approved, then we come up with some other checks and balances. Sorry, and just approve the final amount being paid, but at least we've controlled who is being paid.
Hmm.
So that's one one thing.
Yeah. Two, I'm just gonna record this.
I know, I just you can read that to me at any time for that.
So at least the vendors are vetted by two people, and so
Yes.
even if the payment itself is just one person, at least adding a payee is going to require two. That's pretty good.
Yes.
Okay.
So uh bills vary a lot in terms of their timeliness, such as um um uh let's say rotor router has to come clear the drain, waiting for two person authentication means we'd have to shut the facility for a couple of days to make sure we get that.
Well, you just have to add the biller once. Once it's been added, then it's just a matter of approving the bill every month, right? Or as often as the bill is due. Once it's been added, it's added on.
True, but but uh we have our standard, um what I'm trying to say is we have our standard uh uh bills like PG&E and and the water company and and et cetera. But um over the course of signing checks over all these years, I uh if we had to approve a a new payee under this system uh for everyone, we're doing like a refund check for, you know, um that's that's a lot of uh uh two two person authentication. I mean, in principle, it sounds like a good idea, but but in terms of emergencies, it's disastrous. It could be disastrous. So um when I looked at these uh possibilities, the three possibilities that he put on here, I said um if we could approve all three, if the board wanted to approve all three, that might cover an uh enough contingencies to get us through the month. You know, like Kevin said, our chase a bill didn't make it in time, and so they cut off our credit card, which cuts off paying our bills, you know, and so that could happen again. All I'm saying is turnaround has to be swift, whatever methods the board approves going forward. Since they don't want to have a a physical person come in and sign checks, use the existing system. Um for instance, tomorrow I have almost thirty checks I have to sign, you know, so um that's that's a lot, and I'm sure when I look at those thirty checks, since uh uh many of them will be refund, half of them will be for people I've never, we've never paid money to, you know, so to factor to factor factor, two person identification for that uh strikes me as onerous. That's all I'm trying to say.
No, so that's exactly what I said to, so the automated bill pay should only be used for regular bills. For refund checks, Kevin can already sign the checks.
True, true. Okay.
Um there's also the credit card, too. So for things like an emergency rotor router, we could put it on the card. Um uh and I I verify that there is a card available. Um it has a minimum, I think, of a ten thousand dollar limit, and it's a hundred twenty five a year. Um however, there's a two percent cash back, which I think works out to a little over six thousand um in in uh we'd have to buy six thousand dollars worth of things, which is not that hard, so.
Is this with Vessel or Chase?
This is well, this is with well.
Yeah, so they have a card called Active Cash, so that is no fees, and it has a two percent cash back.
Um I think the rep was saying that because of our government checking account, there's something weird about our.
I thought we were in the consumer side, so that's why I mentioned it, but.
Well, that's why it's so weird. We're on the consumer side, but we're also governmental account, so I think it's it was opened just way too long ago.
Oh, okay.
And it limits what we can enter. At least that's what they were saying to me, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I agree with Steve. If if there is a scenario in which we can pass on or approve all three options, um I think that definitely just covers all of our bases. Um but also, too, if we, for some reason, do end up having to maintain the status quo, I think you know, we all live in the area, so we can help out with signing checks as long as we're given that authority. But again, the scenario of an emergency arises, and that's where it gets tricky, but I think if we can do all three, that that would be the best option.
Yeah, I'm just saying, to the extent, we're trying to strike a balance here between a um uh worst case uh embezzlement and uh and uh control to make sure that no one person, generally speaking, uh can can steal uh and that's where the two factor authentication comes in. Uh uh you know, in 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 a negative thinking sense, but in a positive thinking sense. Um like I say, we the bills are are very different and a timeliness and the people we have to deal with are different. I don't know. I don't know if the other boards that uh members realize that that uh uh we pay some of our um uh some of our employees pay some of our bills with their own credit cards, and then we reimburse them. And you know, uh so it mainly happens with with Jay, you know, paying a lot of bills. But I've seen it, you know, with other employees in the past, too, and I hate to do that, but it's the only um I'm sure it's the only way to get the services we need to function as a unit uh is to have that possibility. So but in that event, yeah, there's there's a review by at least a a second person. And that's all all you're ever gonna get anyway, is a second order review as best you can. You know, um what we approved in our uh uh at the beginning of the meeting, you know, the list, all the checks to the limit that they uh the descriptions give you some idea of what they were for. Um at least you're seeing them and saying, okay, yeah, these look legitimate. They aren't all for Chuck E. Cheese, you know. If Chuck E. Cheese still exists, you know, so anyway. So and uh I'm I thank you for bringing it on the agenda. I I realize we we can't approve a a solution tonight, but I'm I I brought it up last month uh because uh come sometime in November, December, legally, I I should stop signing checks. And that's coming up soon. I'm worried that come November, December, you can't pay your bills. Although I know that uh Misha, you've got signature authority uh for most uh for the things that Kevin doesn't. You know, so. And so does Kevin Channel, but I haven't seen him in a while, so anyway.
Um so in terms of direction to staff, um and I understanding that uh the board would like a proposal as far as the bill pay, the credit card, and then um changing the policies seems like a little bit more of a long term issue that maybe after the other two steps are taken, we can see maybe what changes might need to, if any, need to happen. If if no changes, then that's great, but it let's say that there's something that's missed that we can't do quickly enough with bill pay, then maybe we can look at that a a policy change at a future date.
Well, is it would it require a policy change to en- enable remote uh authorization to uh um uh ease the burden of signing and item one and uh item three, delegate authority to staff uh to the general manager for a period of at least six months. Something, you know, to make sure you 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 cover the at least the initial six months.
Um it's possible. I'm just worried about the auditors.
And also offered that she can sign texts if we mail them to her, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm I'm so, yeah, I'm back home every weekend, too, so I'm I'm there frequent enough to sign checks, but again, in the scenario where there is an emergency, I probably wouldn't be the first resort.
Well, and and Sunny and I are happy to drive it to um any of our directors who are um close by. Uh we've 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 done that before, so if it's really a pinch, we can we can make it happen. So that's a possibility. It's just that with policy changes, I I would really want to know exactly what we're doing first, uh what its specific exceptions and why, and what those um checks and balances would be, so that way, when the auditors do the audit, they can rest assured that we've done everything to separate things as much as possible.
Are there any limitations to implementing the first two options and then also giving signing authority to all directors and then kind of tabling that third option for a later date?
Oh, signing authority can be given to directors anytime.
Oh, I can't I can't have it because of that.
Oh, oh, oh. Except for Director Abuja, um but for everyone else, uh because the board uh made me a key executive, uh it'll make any transition with future board members very easy, so um that way, any board member can and will be a signer uh going into the future.
Okay, so then in that case, um the limitations for implementing the first two options and then tabling the third one for a possible later date.
Okay. All right, I I understand the directive, uh and I'll bring something back uh next month.
And uh Kevin, I also wanted to say it makes absolute a lot of sense for you to move the chase card over to Wells Fargo, because like you said, the bill pays just becomes a matter of transferring into from the checking account to the credit card account. And you can use the credit card in case of an emergency for most bill pay stuff, so.
Great, thank you.
So there's no other comments. We don't need to act on this now. Um we'll save that for next month, but um I think definitely getting um the other director as a signer before the end of Steve's term would be great. Um and then adding the new ones that join on as well. Um so we'll go ahead and move on to item five and five A, the general manager's report. You're muted.
Thank you. Um. All right, so uh this is the manager's report for uh July. I did do a slight naming convention um change. I was calling the manager's report by the same month as the meeting, so it used to be the August manager's report. I decided it might make more sense to be the July manager's report because it kind of covers July uh and maybe like a few days in August. Um in any case, uh some things to be aware of is that summer has pretty much wrapped up at this point. Uh this is the first, this is the end of the first week of session five, which is our final uh session of the summer. Next week is the last week, and then our programs start ramping down. Um at this point, the challenge for staff uh is that many of our employees are going back to school. And so, you know, their priorities change very drastically and very quickly. And so shifts that maybe were locked in are uh a little bit more shaky as as we enter fall. Um and so the challenge for us is is really gracefully, you know, ramping the that staff down and minimizing the amount that um that swimmers actually notice this stuff. So the the better we do, the less anyone notices anything's wrong. Um and at the same time, we're also planning for fall, so we've started fall signups uh for swim lessons and uh and so we'll be continuing on into the fall. Uh let me see here. Uh we're also beginning to look into the digital payments again. Um this one is starting to fall a little bit behind uh due to uh several back to back illnesses, but um we're getting on to that one, and I hope to bring um a proposal to the board uh sometime in the next two months, so that we can get started and get our digital payment platform uh early next year. Um other than that, um I am planning on putting some of the policy work on hold, just because uh we just were kind of um we have our hands full with all the other projects that are happening right now and very soon. Um other than that, no pool closures, and I'm happy to say that so far, we have not been um closed due to bad air quality, which usually happens around this time of year or next month. So I I really hope that we can continue uh with our good run and uh no more fires and smoke, which is the problem.
I got a quick question on the item before that. I'd hate to go backwards, but um uh Misha, you're up for reelection in in uh uh the worst case scenario that could happen, and the reason I I urged us to try and come up with a solution is if you're not reelected, because I understand there's three people on the ballot, you come in third, you're not reelected, then uh you timeout on the same day I timeout.
Hmm.
You know, so that's I I hate to be an alarmist, but I just wanted to bring that up. So it occurred to me. I don't know why it didn't occur to me before, but other than that, I pray I pray you end up in the top two.
Thank you. Um yeah, that was part of the reason why I was a bit hesitant to fully offer myself, especially for check signing, because had I not been up for reelection, I I would have, but yeah, it's definitely on the back of my mind at all times.
Yeah, in which case that means sometime in December, uh all we can do is pay refund checks. You know, which aren't that big at that time. So.
Uh we we can also, uh because I'm a a key executive, I can get the new directors on very quickly. It should be okay.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. All right. Uh enough of me being a downer. All right.
All right, with on that note, um we'll go ahead and adjourn at seven seventeen. Thank you all for joining.